Good morning, everyone. I guess we survived the Labor Day.
Labor hard.
Okay, well, today is the second day of September. The time is ten o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct this weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Currently, Commissioner Davidson is absent. Are there any changes to the agenda, my clerk?
There are not.
No changes to the agenda, okay. Could you identify yourself so that our clerk can...
Your name is John Stark over here. Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Don Bridge, Clerk's Office.
Ken Sissler, Fleet Manager.
Ryan Landen, Procurement.
Alex Murray, Operations.
Job like Paravox.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Tim Sturgis, Clerk's Office.
Elizabeth Alton, Procurement.
Kathy Corliss, Procurement.
Evan Amadon, Procurement.
Robyn Sweeney, Procurement.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communication.
IT guy, real IT guy.
Heidi, Clerk's Office.
All right, are there no changes to the agenda? Okay, our first item of business is a special recognition. I've asked Commissioner Daley to read the recognition.
This is for National Procurement Institute Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. For the fifth consecutive year, Ada County Procurement has been awarded the prestigious Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement from the National Procurement Institute. Ada County Procurement is the only Idaho procurement program to ever receive this award. And again, fifth year. The AEP award is earned by agencies that demonstrate a commitment to procurement excellence. This annual program recognizes procurement organizations that embrace innovation, professionalism, productivity, leadership, and e-procurement. The AEP program encourages the development of excellence as well as continued organizational improvement to earn the award annually. For 2025, there were 216 successful applicants, including 85 cities, 48 counties, 23 special districts, 26 school districts, 15 higher education agencies, seven state or provincial agencies, and others. Again, the only Idaho procurement program to get this award.
Well, congratulations. You gonna have to build a trophy case down there?
We do, we have one set up down there.
You have to stop by and see it.
Okay, congratulations. That's great.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have the Volunteer Board appointment. Appointment of Kayla Wilcox to the Parks and Open Space and Trails Advisory Board, term to expire nine thirty twenty eight. Anybody want to say anything about Kayla Wilcox?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I had a good conversation with Kayla, and she's going to be an excellent new part of our board. We appreciate the fact that volunteers from the community want to do this and help us do our job and all these things. Anyway, so, if you're ready for a motion?
We're ready for a motion, yeah.
I move to appoint Kayla Wilcox to the Parks and Open Space and Trails Advisory Board, term to expire nine thirty twenty twenty eight.
Is there a second to the motion? Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? We are always happy to have a volunteer that wants to work on any one of our volunteer committees, and so we thank Kayla for her willingness to assist her.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. You don't have a picture with the procurement people?
Yeah, we could do that. Let's vote on this first.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, now, we're gonna get a picture of the procurement group for the award.
All right. Yeah, let's go ahead.
Tell us where you want us to go. Unfinished business needs take up, which does require a motion. I'll accept the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. First will take up bid number twenty five zero seven zero.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First item under unfinished business this morning is bid two five zero seven zero, the Ada County Victim Services stairs and ramp replacement and courthouse front entry stair replacement, 2025. And at our August twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five open business meeting, I brought before you a protest from the group, Optimum Build Group, in response to a recommendation to award letter that we sent out. Just to kind of recap some of the events prior to this protest, bid two five zero seven zero was issued on July thirtieth, and bids were opened with the board on August nineteenth. We received two bids, one of which was from Optimum Build Group for seven hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred forty-five dollars, and the second bidder was Engineered Structures Incorporated with a bid of three hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars. Like I mentioned, a recommendation to award to ESI was issued on August twentieth, that's the lowest responsive bidder, or the apparent lowest responsive bidder. And August, on August twenty-fifth, we received a protest of that award recommendation from the Optimum Build Group. Now, they are protesting that there is ambiguity in the specifications regarding the handrails in this project. There is discrepancy from what was communicated at the pre-bid that was held on August eighth and what was issued in the addendum that was sent out on August twelfth. The addendum included specifications for the courthouse handrails replacement for the entire perimeter of the courthouse, when just the courthouse front steps was called for in the specifications. Because of these differing documents, there was confusion to how much linear head rails was needed. So you've had an opportunity to review the protest and whether the protest has merit or not, and based on what Optimum Build Group have provided in their protest, does the board want to uphold the protest, or does the board want to deny the protest?
Okay, any discussion? I think we concluded that it might be better to uphold the protest and rebid it.
Yep.
So I'd accept a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uphold the protest and rebid the Ada County Victim Services stairs and ramp replacement and courthouse front entry replacement in 2025.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just a slight revision to also reject all the bids that were submitted for this project.
That's right, we did. But we do need to reject the bid, okay. I amend my motion to reject the bids, and then the other part of my motion.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Second. Okay, you've heard the motion to reject all bids on bid number twenty five zero seven zero, uphold the protest. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we have another one. Award of bid number twenty five seven four, zero seven four.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for bid two five zero seven four, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Outdoor Paved Storage Improvement, 2025, and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter to your consideration.
Please read the letter for...
I'd be happy to. Letter dated September second, two thousand twenty-five, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two five zero seven four. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two five zero seven four to Sunny Ridge Construction as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of two hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Okay, any questions or issues? Hearing none, I would accept a motion.
I'll move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two five zero seven four, Ada County Sheriff's Office Outdoor Paved Storage Improvements to Sunny Ridge Construction in the amount of two hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, now, we get into the new business. We have a number of public hearings because of resolutions, so I will open a public hearing on resolution number thirty-one twenty-one. Any issues or questions about that one? It's about providing a sale of Ada County personal property to the decommissioned computers, to computers for kids. Any questions on that, issues?
No, just, Mr. Chairman, this is a good program that we've been affiliated with. They do a great job of making these computers available to kids.
I think so. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-one. Call for a motion.
I move that we approve resolution thirty-one twenty-one to provide for the disposal of decommissioned equipment to computers.
You've heard the motion, been moving second, and all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you. All right, I'll open a public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-two, resolution adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the public defender's budget. Any questions or issues on this? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-two. Call for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number three one two two, as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you. I'll open a public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-three, and a resolution adjusting the Ada County budget for fiscal year twenty-five to reflect the use of fund balance to the added alarm budget. Any questions or issues on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-three. Call for a motion.
I move to approve resolution thirty-one twenty-three.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. I'll open a public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-four, resolution for sole source procurement of heart intercivic equipment, software, and installation services. Any questions or issues on resolution thirty-one twenty-four? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-four and accept a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number three one two four, as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any other questions or issues? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I'll open a public hearing on resolution number thirty-one twenty-five, resolution for procurement of transportation services on the open market for transportation of election equipment. Any questions or issues on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number thirty-one twenty-five and accept a motion.
I move to approve resolution thirty-one twenty-five, as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-six, resolution for the sale of personal property owned by Ada County, vehicles, maintenance, office, and furniture and vehicle parts. Any questions or issues on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-six and accept a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number three one two six, as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-seven, resolution for the sale of personal property owned by Ada County, vehicles and office furniture.
I move to approve resolution thirty-one twenty-seven.
Second. I will close the public hearing on resolution thirty-one twenty-seven and have accepted a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I'll find another couple of resolutions. I'll be anywhere around it.
Don't be somewhere around here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, now, we're getting into some procurement stuff again. Bob, go ahead. We gotta open bid number twenty-five seventy-one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, under the new business this morning is the opening of bid two five zero seven one, the Ada County Courthouse Generator Replacement Project, and we received two responses for this bid, and Ryan has our bonfire e-procurement system all queued up and ready for us to open.
I'm ready. Ryan's opening these up. Today, we'll be looking at the name of the bidder and then the total bid amount. The total bid amount will have a base bid amount along with a owner's contingency of fifty thousand dollars. So the spreadsheet's opening up. Our first bidder is Hunt Electric, and they have a total bid amount of nine hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars. Bidder number two is Twin City Electricians Incorporated, and they have a total bid amount of one million sixty-one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Those are our two bidders, and we'll need a little time to evaluate their bids, so we would like to request this be tabled for award to the September ninth, two thousand twenty-five open business meeting.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to table the award of opening bid number two five zero seven one to September ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Gary? Go ahead.
Thank you. Our second item under new business is the opening of bid two five zero seven two, the rebid of Ada County Sheriff's Office radio sites, power systems, battery replacement, and we received six responses for this project, and you're ready for us to open, Ryan will proceed. Ryan's opening these up. We'll be looking for the name of the bidder today and just the total bid amount. Okay. So our first bidder is Cochran Incorporated, and they have a total bid amount of ninety-five thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-six cents. Bidder number two is Legacy Power Systems, a total bid amount of ninety-eight thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars. Bidder number three is Stationery Power Systems, and they have a total bid amount of seventy-eight thousand nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Bidder number four is Turbion Enterprises LLC, and they have a total bid amount of seventy thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Bidder number five is Twin Cities Electricians Incorporated, with a total bid amount of seventy-one thousand six hundred thirty dollars and sixteen cents. Bidder number six is Western States Equipment, and they have a total bid amount of seventy-six thousand thirty-two dollars. And those are our bidders, and we would like to request that this be tabled for award to the September ninth, two thousand twenty-five open business meeting.
Okay, I would accept the motion.
I move to table bid two five zero seven two to September ninth, the open business meeting, to allow staff time to review the bids.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Clerk's Office. You got any good stuff to say?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
You'll see on the agenda the request from West Ada, CUNA, and Melba School Districts for an extension on their L two requests, and that is something I believe the board is familiar with seeing. They're just waiting on some information from the state, but that is before the board for your consideration today.
Have you received Boise yet?
Have we received Boise?
No, I think Boise's on here, isn't it? Or is it not?
No, West Ada, CUNA, and Melba.
No, so Boise, so this has got to do with the facilities funding. They actually just got that, we got that figure this morning from the State Tax Commission and Board of Education, so therefore, we'll pass that information on to the school districts so they'll get their L twos completed and stuff and get them in time for next week, but they will do that extension. Nothing the school districts did, they just didn't get the final numbers, they didn't do their L twos.
And that's why I wanted to make sure that people understood.
Yes, no follow theirs.
No, no follow theirs. They just didn't have the information.
Correct.
Okay.
Other than that, as you know, candidate filing ended last Friday. We have some key dates coming up this Friday. The districts have until Friday to certify anybody who filed within the last two weeks, and then Friday also marks the withdrawal deadline and then the write-in deadline. So after that, we'll be able to gather all of the information necessary for our elections guide, which will be posted on our website, to include sample ballots, all the contests, key dates, things like that. So we're getting closer.
Okay. Any other, anything else?
That's all I got for you.
You heard the motion on this L twos.
Do we need a motion?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
Just say it.
Okay, well, I'll accept the motion to approve the L two request from West Ada, CUNA, and Melba.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the L two requests for extension for budget certification for West Ada School District, Q School District, and Melba School District, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now, we have several catering permits and new licenses. Any questions or issues on the catering permits and new licenses?
Similar ratifications, yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we ratify the four catering permits that the chairman has previously signed on August twenty-ninth, and approve the thirty new applications as listed on the agenda.
Okay. We'll start the move. There's the motion. Any further questions?
And authorize the chair to sign the documents.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say goodbye by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. We have a couple of new licenses and license transfers we need to authorize as well.
I move to approve the four new licenses and the three license transfers as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Claims Journal, we got a pair of... Motion carries. Now, in the claims journal, we got a pair of bills this month, this week. I'll accept the motion on the claims journal.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated August twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have a couple of personnel changes, actions. I accept the motion on the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Oh, Brad.
Good morning.
We have the treasurer's office here with some, a little bit of business you'd like to transfer.
Yeah, we have a couple of tax cancellations, but I'd like to start out with some good news first. We're excited with the budget being approved, and, uh, we're gonna be moving forward with our publishing, our RFP this week, uh, for the Kama Property Tax Software, so we're really excited about that. Legal teams helped out tremendously, uh, our consultant and procurement, now that I see they got the excellence award, I know we're in good hands as we navigate that, so that'll be happening, uh, this week, and that'll be a long journey. And then, if you read the newsletter, um, we're also, um, working with Star Cards, that are typically, we only do titles and registration at our facilities, but we are working with ITD and the sheriff's office, so we're doing Star Cards and with no appointment required, so a lot of places you have to have that appointment, so it's a walk-in basis, so, uh, we're processing about fifty a day there at our Shandon location, so.
Really?
Pretty excited to be working with some other departments to make that happen, so we've cross-trained our employees so we can accommodate that, so, yeah.
Great.
So just wanna get the word out, Elizabeth Duncan got it out in the newsletter this last week, so we're thankful for that, so.
Alright.
Other than that, we got the fifty-three property tax cancellations on the schedule.
Okay, any questions or issues on these cancellations, which are not cancellations, they're actually adjustments, but the code calls them to cancellation. Alright. Alright, I accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we got treasurer's office up.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, we don't have any updates for you today, just our business as usual. Our, I can tell you, our collections for the, uh, primary bill are ongoing, and we're about ninety-nine point two percent of all property tax collections for, uh, the primary bill.
Okay. What's the ones that point eight percent gonna get collected?
It, uh, we, we, uh, yeah, slowly trickles in over time, and we just keep working with it.
Alright, well, okay, any questions for the treasurer? Alright, thank you. Alright, we have the approval of our minutes for, uh, eight-thirteen and approval of our public hearing for eight-thirteen. Any questions on the approval of the minutes? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the Open Business Meeting, uh, August thirteenth meeting minutes and the public hearing, August thirteenth meeting minutes. Sir.
I'll authorize the chair to sign the documents.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any questions or issues on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Alright, we have Barbara Park, Barbara Park Education and Events Center, we have two agreements, uh, for that. Any questions on any of that? Hearing none, I accept the motion.
I'll move to approve Barbara Park Education and Events Center agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Alright, now we have fifty-five agreements. Most of these are renewable and renewed agreements, because as, as most people realize, all of our agreements terminate at the end of the fiscal year, which is September, uh, thirty, so these are, a lot of them are renewable. Any, any questions or issues about any of these agreements?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of the agreements, I'd just like to note, uh, the, uh, tax preparation software. I don't know if you wanna comment on that, but, uh, that's an agreement that I think is, is important for us to, to have.
Uh, sure, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Daley. Uh, I think that's number, agreement number eleven, number eleven? Yeah, Auto Agent. So what Auto Agent is, is a, it's an aggregator of data, information, and mortgage, uh, payments. And so, uh, people who have mortgages, uh, this is typically, uh, will get fifty, maybe seventy million dollars in payments, uh, they go through Auto Agent. So, for instance, if you were with Wells Fargo, um, Roundpoint, uh, there's so many different mortgage companies. What they do is they send a, uh, payment file and a, a data file through Auto Agent, and they, they collect and aggregate all those payments, and then we get paid in two big payments from them, primarily in December, just prior to the due date, and then also in, uh, June, just prior to the due date. And so we have an agreement with them to do this. This is very common, I think, most, uh, large, uh, uh, mortgage companies do it that way, and it doesn't cost the county anything. Uh, they, they do it for us as a service, they do charge the mortgage company, so if a mortgage, uh, like Wells Fargo has ten thousand, uh, properties in Ada County, uh, they'll collect that from them, Wells Fargo will pay them, I think it's like a quarter per property. And then we get these large payments, so it, it makes it easier for the mortgage company to make sure their payments are getting to the counties on time, and, uh, for us, it's convenient because we get those payments and we can apply it in a, in a large batch.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I, I, I thought it was useful for the public to know because those who have, uh, payments on their house and it's just in an, an escrow account, they don't, they get the tax bill, but they don't have to pay the bill, and it's useful for them to know the process of how that all happens so that they don't have to worry about getting a penalty for not having paid it on time or whatever.
That's right, and, and there's a lot of confusion around that because we'll get a call, for example, from a taxpayer, and, uh, they'll say, hey, I'm just calling to see if my, if you guys received my, uh, payment on my home, and we'll go into the system and look it up, and, and we might see that it hasn't been paid, so we'll say, no, it doesn't look like it's been paid, and they'll, they have their mortgage statement in front of them, and they're saying, well, my mortgage company said they sent that payment in, you know, two weeks ago, you should have it. And so what they don't realize is, yes, the mortgage company did send that payment, but they sent it to Auto Agent, and they then collect it, and we get it usually just a few days before the due date. Uh, so we, we're constantly educating them on that, and actually, prior to my, uh, experience working here, I didn't know that either, so if I saw my mortgage company look like they had paid it on the fifteenth, and I'm calling and we haven't received it yet, uh, I would probably think the same thing. So we, we tell them that, and, uh, you know, helps them to understand, but it's an ongoing thing for us, educating the taxpayers.
Thanks, thanks for that experience.
Do most mortgage servicers use Auto Agent?
Uh, most of them do. Yeah, there's, uh, small, uh, small companies, uh, that maybe won't use it, they might have twenty-five properties they're paying, and so they'll just send in a check, uh, with twenty-five coupons, or they, they might send us a list of the parcels they're paying, but almost all of the, in fact, I think all of the big ones use a servicer like that, and Auto Agent is one of the largest.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you. I have a cou, I have a couple more to.
Go ahead.
Uh, number seventeen as well, not, not tax, but is, is the lease on the driver's license facility in, in Radian, and I think I have gotten lots of comments from people about the fact that they can go there quickly and easily, even if they don't make an appointment, but they can make an appointment, and then you can just walk in, and it's very, very useful, not have to drive all the way down here as well as, uh, as, um, it's quick and easy. Uh, and, 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 number eighteen as well, that one needed to be, that's one that requires us to have listed the company and as well as the amount, so that's why we're listed there for people.
Sure.
You know, that the law requires us to actually have that in writing in our notes, and so that's.
Yep.
Useful. And a couple of more. There's, there are like nineteen of them that are agreements with the sheriff's office and the community service participants, and we have a variety of people from the highway district to cities, to, to the zoo, and, uh, this is something that I think is noteworthy, that the sheriff participates and gives service to those entities, the humane society, uh, churches, uh, uh, goodwill. Those are, those are things that the sheriff's works with, these people in our community to provide service at no cost to those people, so I think that's, that's worthy of noting as well, that, uh, these are part of the agreements that are listed here. They're annual agreements, as you said, these are all renewals, but, uh, they're agreements that are important for us and for the community.
Yeah, any other questions or discussions on any of the, uh, any of the agreements? There's, there's only fifty-five of them.
If anybody's interested, you don't want to get them, I'm sure, that's another, another note.
Okay, well, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the fifty-five agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Carries. And we have one, uh, item on the, uh, indigenous services, the weekly indigenous items, I'll accept the motion on the weekly indigenous items.
I move to accept the recommendations of the indigenous services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated September second, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Are there any other things we brought forward before we, uh, enter? Hearing none. Board adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.